We should start every meeting.
Okay.
Are we recording?
Okay, thank you all. I'd like to call the order. This is Board of Health's regular meeting for September 16th. My clock's 6:38. I appreciate everybody's patience and apologize for the late start. I also want to say thank you to all staff and non-staff for your time and your care. Public comment? I did not see any. Don't see any. That's not you guys. Moved on to approval of minutes. There was an error noticed in the minutes from August 19th, so I'm gonna like to table those until...
You can correct them. You don't have to table them. Was it a big error?
Not a huge error, but...
I just want to have them reprinted and come back next month.
It's missing some information.
Do we need a vote to table? I don't think so, right? No, okay. All right, table till next meeting. Before we move on to... We're gonna have a presentation this evening. I really appreciate that. I want to take one little segue moment here. We have a new member of the Board of Health. I want to welcome Dr. Zurich. Am I saying it correctly?
No.
Fantastic. We're so happy to have you join the group. Let's just take a quick moment to introduce ourselves. Do you want to start as the guest of honor for this evening? Put you right in the hot seat.
I'll find you with that. I'm Dr. Michael Zurich. I've been a dentist here for over 20 years in Woodstock. And I heard that there was a need for helping on the board, so I decided to help again because there was a vacancy for quite some time.
Okay. Pam, you want to go?
And I don't think Dr. made it clear, but he's served on public health before, so it's not...
Mm-hmm.
Pamela Althoff. We know each other.
Great. That's quite easy.
I'm Dr. Melissa Katz. I'm a licensed clinical psychologist that works with kids and adolescents.
Hi, I'm Lou Bay. I am a long-term Woodstock resident and community leader, not-for-profit leader. The joke for a while was I'm not a dentist, but I did work for a dental office for a really long time with George Dallas. So, welcome. We're glad to have you.
Hi, I'm Cheyenne. I'm an administrative specialist here at the Health Department, and I'm just here helping out.
Melissa Adamson, I'm the Public Health Administrator.
Kyle Markerson. I'm a firefighter paramedic along with a handful of other things. I'm currently the vice chair and I'm the chair of the personnel committee. Welcome.
I'm Cecilia Carmen. I'm a nurse. I've been on the board for about three years. And I live in Lake in the Hills, and I'm the secretary. That was it.
Yep.
My name is Sarah Clark. I'm a registered nurse and I work over at Valley High.
Dr. Laura Tomaso. I'm the medical advisor for the county. Over two years I've been in the role, and I'm urgent care, wound and hyperbaric medicine doctor.
Now we'll segue to this direction, and then it'll work out perfectly if we get to the end.
Hi, I'm Megan Hack. I'm the director of community health.
Susan Harris, Director of Public Health Nurse.
Mary Lynn Howell, Director for the Veterinary Public Health Division.
Anne Mary, Director of Planning and Analysis.
Patty Gnome, Environmental Health.
Elizabeth Kessler, Executive Director for the McHenry County Conservation District.
He knows us, but Bonnie Leahy, trustee for the Conservation District.
Perfect.
Hi, I'm Ryan Sacks. I'm the Epidemiology Program Coordinator.
We have a full house. We've got a lot of great faces. This is a great team. And as you noted, we have had an opening, and I'm grateful that you're here, and especially coming back after serving before us. It's a big home, so thank you very much. We're gonna move on to our presentation from the McHenry County Conservation District. You have to forward.
Wonderful. Well, thank you. Good evening, everyone. And it is our honor and privilege to spend a little bit of time with you this evening. As I introduced myself before, Elizabeth Kessler and I serve as the Executive Director for the Conservation District. Bonnie Leahy is on our Board of Trustees, and she's with me this evening. And of course, your newest board member, Mike Zurich, is also one of our board members as well. And then Pam Althoff is a liaison and works as on our Conservation Foundation Board of Director, so which is great. So we're gonna start off tonight. We want to talk a little bit about our Proposition 2024 that's on the ballot on November 5th. We have a little video that we want to play first, and then I'll be able to answer some questions. Let's see if we can get this to work here. I need some help.
Oh!
Residents in McHenry County are being offered a choice on the November 5th general election ballot. This proposition will increase the limiting rate for the McHenry County Conservation District and has been put forward by the Board of Trustees
Can we pause it? To ensure McHenry County's natural environment remains protected.
Yeah, I thought...
Huh? You're supposed to have it on.
Oh, the H old IT issue.
Wait, here's some volume. Let's see.
Can you have it just start it from the beginning and we'll see if it can make a sound? We're changing buttons over here.
Oh, wait. No. It looks like it's on, but I'm not sure what...
Okay.
On your computer side? Yeah. Because you're displaying from the computer audio instead of the...
Mom, Ryan?
I'm guessing it is.
Oh, yeah. Click on... Yep, click that.
Do we know what that is?
No idea.
Intel display audio.
Let's try it.
Let's try it.
Maybe sound through HDMI.
We're about to find out.
It's gonna be so loud.
Yep.
No, it's not gonna be loud.
Yeah, now there's no sound.
Now there's no sound.
We could cozy up here and listen to it from the computer.
Wait. Let's try it. Hold on.
...on the November 5th general...
Oh, that's cute. Let's go with it.
Teamwork.
Next dream work. We're gonna finish and enter the full screen here. Okay, here we go. We're getting closer.
Now we're really professional.
Residents in McHenry County are being offered a choice on the November 5th general election ballot. This proposition will increase the limiting rate for the McHenry County Conservation District and has been put forward by the Board of Trustees to ensure McHenry County's natural environment remains protected, accessible, and thriving for generations to come. Your decision will have a significant impact on our ability to protect water quality, preserve wildlife habitat, and improve outdoor recreation access for all. Back in 1971, the McHenry County Conservation District was founded through a countywide referendum. The vision behind it was clear: to protect our open spaces, preserve vital wildlife habitat, and create more opportunities for environmental education and outdoor recreation. This initiative was inspired by the unique and invaluable natural landscapes of McHenry County. Over the past 53 years, with the steadfast support of county residents, we've made significant progress. We've protected over 25,800 acres of land, showcasing our community's deep commitment to preserving McHenry County's natural heritage. This ongoing support has been crucial. Because of it, we've safeguarded some of the most diverse and ecologically important areas in northeastern Illinois, places that are essential for the air we breathe, the water we drink, and the overall well-being of our community and economy. Today, more than 1.2 million visitors come to our sites each year, contributing significantly to our local economy. With 35 sites open to the public for activities like paddling, picnicking, fishing, wildlife viewing and camping, and over 150 miles of trails for bicycling, hiking, snowmobiling, cross-country skiing, and horseback riding, the Conservation District truly has something for everyone. Let me share a few stories that highlight the value of what we do. There's a family here in McHenry County who, like many of us, love spending time together outdoors. As their parents aged, it became harder to find activities everyone could enjoy and do together, especially since their parents used to be avid cyclists. They discovered the Cycling Without Age program, which partners with the Conservation District to offer special tri-shaws, three-wheeled cycles with passenger seats that let seniors experience the joy of cycling again, even if they can't pedal themselves. This story is just one example of how our commitment to inclusive outdoor recreation allows families to create lasting memories across generations. It shows the real impact of our work on the quality of life for people of all ages and abilities. On a warm spring day at Brookdale Conservation Area, a grandfather slowly walked along the path to the pond, his two grandchildren bounding around him with their camp Snoopy fishing poles and tackle boxes. The excitement in their voices was contagious as they chattered about going fishing with grandpa. His smile could be seen from 50 feet away as they cast their lines into the water. This simple yet profound moment is a testament to how the Conservation District creates spaces where families can bond and pass down traditions, enriching their lives and deepening their connection to nature. One crisp autumn morning, a local resident noticed a red-tailed hawk struggling to fly near a wooded area in McHenry County. Concerned, they contacted the Conservation District, which immediately dispatched a wildlife specialist from our Wildlife Resource Center to assess the situation. The hawk had a wounded wing, likely from a collision, and was unable to hunt or care for itself. The specialist carefully captured the hawk and brought it to the Wildlife Resource Center where it received the care it needed to heal. Over the next several weeks, the hawk's progress was monitored closely, and once it was strong enough, it was released back into the wild where it could soar through the skies once again. This story illustrates how the Conservation District's dedication to protecting wildlife ensures that even the most vulnerable animals have a chance to thrive. Whether it's rehabilitating a majestic bird of prey or safeguarding an endangered or threatened species, our efforts make a real difference in preserving the natural beauty and biodiversity of McHenry County. There are so many stories like these, and I'm sure you can think of some as well. As the district gets ready to retire our general obligation bonds, McHenry County residents have a choice to make, a decision that will impact our ability to protect water quality, preserve wildlife habitat, and improve outdoor recreation access for all. If the proposition to increase the limiting rate is successful, it will enable us to continue and expand our conservation efforts, restoring land to optimal health and maintaining and enhancing existing conservation areas and trails for public enjoyment. The ballot proposition focuses on three main areas. One big focus is protecting the natural areas that keep McHenry County's drinking water clean. These areas filter and store water, ensuring what comes out of your tap is safe to drink. We're also working to preserve and restore places along our rivers, lakes, and streams. These efforts are crucial not only for maintaining the health and sustainability of our water sources, but also for reducing flooding. By managing these natural areas effectively, we keep water out of basements and protect homes from flood damage. McHenry County is home to some of the most diverse and unique wildlife habitats in northeastern Illinois. From our prairies and woodlands to our wetlands, these areas provide essential homes for countless species, some of which are endangered or threatened. The proposition would allow us to protect these vital habitats and enhance our restoration projects, ensuring that the rich biodiversity of our region is preserved. Our work also includes maintaining the health of these ecosystems, which are not just sanctuaries for wildlife, but also critical to our own well-being. These areas clean our air and provide natural spaces for recreation, education, and inspiration. Lastly, we're focused on improving outdoor recreation access for all. This means enhancing trails, parks, and natural areas to ensure they're welcoming and accessible, including for people with disabilities. The physical and mental health benefits of spending time outdoors are well documented, and we want to make sure those benefits are available to everyone. We're also committed to providing opportunities for both children and adults to disconnect from technology and social media, allowing them to immerse themselves in nature and develop a deeper connection with the world around them. To get a sense of what future investments could do, let's look at some examples. Since the last voter-approved referendum in 2007, the district has significantly expanded its habitat restoration efforts, increasing the managed and restored acreage from 6,500 to 15,500 acres. Despite challenges like climate change and invasive species, these efforts have improved the quality and health of our ecosystems. Additional investments will enable us to maintain our current land management portfolio while expanding restoration across the remaining habitat opportunity areas throughout the county. Notable projects include the Kishawaki River Restoration and the reintroduction of Bison and Pleasant Valley Conservation Area to enhance soil health and create grassland bird habitat. Many of our bike trails were built with grants 15 to 30 years ago and now require significant improvements. We are focused on resurfacing the Prairie Trail, making trail connections, and adding amenities such as wayfinding signage to ensure that these well-used and loved trails continue to provide our community with safe and enjoyable recreational opportunities. We will renovate trails at sites, including Glacial Park and the Hollows, to current standards, and finish the master plan for Fox Bluff Conservation Area to provide access to the Fox River and renovate several culturally historic buildings. We also plan to update existing amenities such as parking lots, boardwalks, bridges, campgrounds, and fishing piers at various sites across the county. So what exactly are we asking for? The ballot proposition asks voters to approve a small increase in the Conservation District's tax levy rate, just 0.027%. This is something that by law we can only do with voter approval. Here's the question you'll see on the ballot. It might look a bit complicated, but it's really straightforward. It talks about the rate increase, what the funds will be used for, and what it means for your property taxes on a $100,000 home. For a home valued at $300,000, this proposition would mean just an extra $2.25 a month, $27 a year. That's a small price to pay for protecting water quality, preserving wildlife habitat, and improving outdoor recreation access for all. If the proposition passes, it gives us a steady source of funding to secure the future of our natural areas and outdoor recreation amenities for generations to come. And here's the good news. As we retire voter-approved general obligation bonds, homeowners with a $300,000 home will see a $94 reduction in their Conservation District property taxes, a 45% cut overall. By law, the funds will only be used for the stated purposes, and we'll conduct an annual public audit to show exactly how the money is spent. But if the proposition doesn't pass, here's what we could be facing: threats to the quality of our drinking water, degraded water quality in our rivers, lakes, and streams, negative impacts on wildlife habitat and natural areas, potential loss of critical habitats to development, and deteriorating site and trail amenities. The general election is on Tuesday, November 5th. Polling places are open from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. You can also vote early, starting Thursday, September 26th. For more details, check out the McHenry County Clerk's Office to learn more about the general election and how and where to vote. Our natural areas define McHenry County's identity and quality of life. These protected areas not only preserve the county's rich natural heritage, but also provide a sanctuary for wildlife and a haven for residents and visitors alike. They are the heart of what makes our community a wonderful place to live, work, and explore. You have been given the choice to make a lasting impact on McHenry County's natural environment and to ensure they remain protected, accessible, and thriving for generations to come. While you are contemplating this important decision this fall, get outside to explore and discover the many beautiful conservation areas and trails close to home. Your vote on the November 5th general election impacts our ability to protect water quality, preserve wildlife habitat, and improve outdoor recreation access for all. On behalf of the Board of Trustees and dedicated staff and volunteers, we thank you for taking the time to learn more about the McHenry County Conservation District and this important ballot proposition. We hope this information helps you make an informed decision in the upcoming election. Feel free to share this information with neighbors, family, and friends. For more details, visit mccd.me/proposition2024. Thank you for your time and attention, and enjoy the wide-open spaces and places that matter in McHenry County. Your vote matters.
I'm gonna vote.
To be glad.
All right.
All right. So we thank you for giving us a little bit of time on your agenda this evening on this proposition. It basically sums it all up. But for a small investment with our bonds being paid, there's a guaranteed reduction, and that small amount will go a long way for us protecting what's really critical to McHenry County, and that's our drinking water, our lakes and streams, and habitats. Interesting, since the district started doing restoration, you've seen... It used to be, I was saying earlier before, you'd come to McHenry County and you wouldn't see a red-tailed hawk. You didn't see wild turkey. You didn't see otters in the Never Seen Creek. And they have returned due to the restoration work. And we also see people that are out there for their physical and mental health, and they are popular and really important for the quality of life here in McHenry County. So I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone has about the proposition.
How do we know that you're really gonna make sure that you retire those bonds and that you don't use additional money? How do I know that?
It's guaranteed. It's guaranteed. Once that's paid off...
Okay, it's a softball question.
It's guaranteed because the debt's paid off in 2026. And what we're doing with this... So with this increase, we're going forward now so we can plan. The debt's paid off. Our board also, this month, has a... They're doing a resolution to abate. But there's a guarantee, so there's no increase. This is a reduction. So with this amount, and you're seeing a 45%, that's a guarantee to happen. If we didn't have this question, you would have greater... So you'd have $115 back. We're looking $94. So it's a small amount. That $27 on a $300,000 home, that's all that we're asking for the reinvestment.
So would I understand it correctly? Because I was touched on my question. Those bonds are gonna be retired. The obligation's gonna retire anyways.
Correct.
But what you're asking for is that obligation has to completely go away, but most of it go away, but $27 to remain.
Correct. And we have to do it through this proposition. We just can't automatically do that without going to the voters.
And because I'm not a taxing body, we can't, this group... Any taxing body cannot endorse a proposition, a referendum. It's prohibited from... by statute. However, if any of you, because you are in medical professional capacity, if you would like to lend your name to our endorsement on our website, we would be extraordinarily grateful and pleased and all of the above if you would consider doing that. It makes a great deal of difference when people see names that they recognize and respect to get us to get over that.
That's the separate... That's the vote yes group, not the Conservation District.
Right, that's the Conservation District. I am the vote yes group. I'm on the foundation. I am not obligated to follow that specific statute. I get to ask you for that. And if that is... If you would be interested, you need to contact me, not the district. You need to contact me. And I'll be happy to give you that information by the end today.
Set names they'd respect, so I shouldn't... I had one more question. The amount of acreage that you protect already... There was a mention in there that you're gonna protect... That the threat was that additional development would reduce... At least, I think, are you looking to secure additional sites? Additional acreage?
So our primary focus is not to acquire new land. It's to take care of what we have to make sure we restore it for its health. But there are some critical pieces that still may come up, and this would allow us to do that. But our focus is taking care of what we have.
What percentage of the land in McHenry County is protected?
So the district has 25,000, just under 26,000 acres of land that's protected. There are a few other entities that do protect land in the county. We work in partnership. So you have a National Wildlife Refuge here, which is protected land. You've got the Land Conservancy, which is a private land trust where there's private easements that are protected. But as far as public protected lands, of course, you have the Illinois Department of Natural Resources. So as far as the acreage to be protected to make sure our water quality with the infiltration stays cleansed, it's really important that these areas that the district has acquired, that those are available to be restored to the best of health. That ensures our future for people that live here as well as the visitors that come here and the wildlife that make McHenry County.
And how does that compare to Kane County or to Page County or Quik County? And the amount of land that they have set aside is...
Yeah, we're under the percentage of what we should have. And if you go to the protection plans of the county and for growth and development, yeah, there's much more, I think, the overall vision. But the district has not been acquiring at all. We're working with partners, and that's what we do. We leverage with our partners. And it's really important that we have those main areas that are protected so that those other entities can work collaboratively with us.
And does that include, like, forest preserve? Or is that only conservation? I mean...
So we don't have a forest preserve district here in McHenry County. The Conservation District is similar to our forest preserves in our other counties. This county chose, and we're only 1 of 5 in Illinois, but our land holdings and the management of ratio to acres is quite impressive as you compare it to other counties and what they have... What they get from their voters and the residents there. So we have a real gem here in McHenry County.
There was a referendum in 1970, given that option. And by far, McHenry County voted to have Conservation District as opposed to... Yes.
As opposed to a forest preserve?
Forest Preserve District.
Help me understand. What's the difference?
There's a couple of things that are different. Governance is different. There's a couple of things that are different. Governance is different, and then the statutory mission is to preserve and protect with or without public access. So then we can, we know it's really important to connect people to the land, so you see, we, we promote that. That's the one. So the governance, the other, is what they, our ability on their levies to, to go to tax is much greater than what the conservation district has. We have a very smaller conservative rate, so that's why this important is so important. Such a small amount can make such a big difference.
So a forest preserve has more land funding ability, and they also can, if I, I didn't understand what you said, that they can prohibit people from entering, or you can prevent people?
On our statute, both have. We set our own general use rules. The conservation land is to ensure that the flora and fauna have protection. But again, connecting, and that's why making sure that you have enough acreage protected, so both can cohabitate together, and you have strong ecosystems, and you also can get people out on our sites enjoying them.
McHenry County is one of the only counties that is not on Lake Michigan water. All of our water, regardless if it's municipal water or if it's private water companies, all of it comes from deep wells. None of it comes from the lake. So that's one of the reasons that it's extraordinarily important to ensure that we preserve open spaces.
I'd like to think I'm a fairly well-informed McHenry County resident, although I think I'm pretty siloed within my discipline at times. This is the first time that I'm hearing about this. And I feel maybe not like concerned about that, but maybe I'm, like, how can we help disseminate this information additionally?
I paid her fifty dollars before she came in.
Well, additionally, I believe I'm attending a McHenry County Conservation District event this weekend for the Great.
The outdoor trail.
Trail, and I'm, and I've been once, but I'm wondering if there might be information to share there for people who are just out and about enjoying the land and the.
Absolutely. Now, I'm so glad you mentioned, you must've got up early and get your tickets, because I was sold out like.
Just like they were gone. And by the way, if you've never been next year, you should go.
So it's a little bit gray for our local, our local breweries that are here, but to get outdoors, you can hike around the trails, and it's a good social time, so thank you. But yeah, we'll have, we'll have a booth, we'll have information there. And if you, and if you find of a group that you feel like we haven't been to or you know of, please share information. We will get the district there. We want to make sure that this information, since this choice is being given to the voters, we want to ensure that they have the factual information. The video that you saw, as well as the shorter version, is up on our YouTube. You can go to the district's website, which is on here as well, and all that information can be shared.
Maybe talk to people when they're walking in and not out.
I actually think that the booths are at the, at the beginning, so I think, I think we will. Yeah. We have people from the foundation board and then volunteers that'll be there.
Do you have signage?
We do have signs at conservation areas. There's no specific campaign signs or things like that, just from costs. From the district's perspective, we're trying to do word of mouth, actually be very responsible stewards of taxpayer dollars, as we are. And so you won't see this. We're just using word of mouth in the hope of building relationships, of this information can be shared appropriately.
Any other questions?
Great, thank you so much. Yeah, I do. I'll give you one of my cards, so you've got all of that. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that presentation. Thank you, McHenry County Conservation District.
We find each other now.
I'm gonna slight change alteration to the agenda. We're gonna move Mr. Ryan Sacks up to the top here. Program highlights on Metopio. Or Metapio.
Thank you again.
Thank you guys, screen night.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Ryan.
Um, so as I said earlier, I'm Ryan Sacks. I am the Epidemiology Program Coordinator. So I'm gonna be talking today about our McHenry County Health Atlas. Why is that? Can I keep typing this wrong one?
Or me, panel?
I'm talking.
The computer.
Um, so our Health Atlas is the start of a visual analytics dashboard. So some of you that were here will remember that we spoke about the community health assessment back in twenty-two, I believe it was. And during that, we were talking about ways that we can more easily keep everyone up to date on the different data that we use for the assessment. And so this is part of that initiative, where we can make data available to all residents on a variety of topics that we use for both the assessment and that they can use for kind of general knowledge about the county, that they can use for grants and other things like that if they are community partners. And that can be used to evaluate different trends in McHenry County. So to get to the Health Atlas is very, very easy. There's a couple of different ways. You will see on, ooh, look, it's already there for me. On our main page at M C H dot info, we do have a direct link there. And then also on our Data and Reports page, we have a link there as well. But the login is actually quite easy to find. It is healthymcHenrycounty.org. I'm just gonna click. So I'm gonna start with kind of what is on the site, and then I will go a little bit over how to use the site, because there are a couple of different things that people might not be used to. And then I will end with some, not really limitations, but just some kind of technical things to be aware of when you're using this information. So on this atlas is pretty much every single form of public health data that my team and I could think of, covering everything from our four health priorities from our last cycle, which were access to care, behavioral health, diabetes, and obesity and active living. And you'll find all of those at the top here. And when new priorities are chosen, those will actually replace this section as well. In addition to that, we have demographic characteristics, socioeconomic characteristics, mortality trends, which are more general information, things like the leading causes of death and all-cause mortality. So basically, how much, how many deaths we've had across every form of disease or chronic condition. Hospitalization trends, very similar, basically the leading causes of hospitalization in the county, as well as some other general information. Access to care is everything related to the ability to access care, everything from health insurance status to barriers that prevent access to care. Our behavioral health section is where we have our overdose surveillance, our substance use data, suicides, and all our data on different mental health conditions. B C D and active living includes both the V M I data, as well as physical activities, screen time, and sleep. Chronic disease for all of our chronic diseases, comical disease as well for all the comical disease. And that is also where you will find our data for each month. You guys get the monthly reportable conditions report in your packet. That data is also going to be available on this atlas, on the comical disease page. Our maternal child health data, neighborhood and built, built environment includes things like crime, accidents, and environmental health. Veterinary public health data, and then perceptions of McHenry County. Now, all of our data from our last community health assessment from the actual survey is also on this atlas, as well as a lot of things from secondary sources that we pull. And one of the great things about Metopio is that they actually pull a lot of data themselves and make it accessible on here. We spent the last approximately six months going through the data that they had available, as well as data that we had available, and choosing what would come onto the site. We currently have three hundred and one health indicators. It took us months to actually go through each one and make sure all the data was accurate and that it was understandable. And then the sheer majority of them, about two-thirds of them, actually are from data that my team curates. And then about a third of the, so about a hundred, are from the curated Metopio data. So a couple places I wanted to highlight data for. So all of our comical disease data in terms of the actual report data that we have, and our outbreaks can be found on our comical disease page. So for example, something we haven't actually had in the packet is the number of outbreaks, and that will be available on this as well. And I will probably use some of those as an example of certain things. And then Patty has graciously supplied some environmental health data as well on the West Nile virus surveillance she does for mosquito batches and food establishment complaints. And we also have, from Mary Ellen's program, a lot of data on bite reports. I'm gonna show some of the data as well as examples.
I know. Stupid, just acting if you want us to pay attention.
To be fair, I'd have to show the picture of the dog.
He's smiling.
I can't not show the picture of the dog. Okay. So in terms of how to use the site, as you can see, it's really easy to click around into the site itself. Everything in this site is under categories, so we have our main categories on this page. And then going into them will take you to those subcategories that some of these have, and then that will take you to the indicators themselves. Some pages will go straight to indicators, for example, demographic characteristics will go straight to those indicators. But you can find basically every indicator under one of these categories, including once we go into our respiratory season, our respiratory surveillance reports, the data from that will also be on here. And then, besides that, you can also search for information directly on this search bar. So if you want a specific topic, that I remember the most, if I spell it correctly, there we go. I think it's actually trying to take me into the demographic section. Instead of this one, which is the actual demographics data. So you can search on the homepage. If you are on any of the pages, you can search on the top section the same way, and that will stay, no matter if you go into an indicator as well, you can always search on that section. And then the last place you can search is on this side menu, so you saw I clicked into it and it opened this. All of the indicators can be searched here, and you can also drop down to any of them in this section as well. So quite easy to navigate. We are piloting an A I tool on this that Metopio made available. I will say it is a little buggy and is currently basically getting a lot of feedback to help improve it. You can type questions, general questions you have into this tool and have it direct you to places. I will say you might not always get it to work yet. We're hopeful that as more people use it, though, it will get better. But we are piloting an A I tool on here as well. And then in terms of general how-to-use, you can find our how-to-use section here, including a video tutorial that will walk you through pretty much a condensed six-minute version of what I'm going over today, including some of the technical limitations I'm gonna go over at the end. This will also have the various data sources that are on here and some technical limitations to be aware of when you're using the site. An overview of features, and then citations as well for those that are interested. So to go into an indicator, I'm gonna go through the categories, because that's the easiest way for me. I'm gonna use one that I know has a lot of data, which is demographics. Now, everyone will probably take you to a default section that's bar charts for the most part, and this will either be called chart or comparisons over here. And you will have a description of the indicator you're on on the top of the page that gives details about what the indicator you're on. But to use this, what you're going to go through is in the side menu here, there's the line chart and the bar chart. That's how you can jump between different graphics. And then here on the side, there is the chart view, which is the section I'm in. There is the places, which is mostly used when you're on the map, but you can also unclick Illinois and United States if you would like. You can switch indicators here as well. And then our stratification and time period, time period are how you jump around. So generally, if you're looking at a visualization and you're not at the right view you wanna look at, the first place to go to is the stratification and time period section, where you can jump between the different groups that we have information on. So right now, I'm displaying data on the sex, McHenry County residents, Illinois residents, and U S residents. But you can jump between any of them, race ethnicity, age. There are sometimes some combos from curated data as well. Use the easiest one, which is sex. And you can also jump between time periods as well for the bar charts, where you can click through them, or you can drag the slider. If you wanna see data over time, what you'll then do is go through this chart view and click on the line chart. As you can see, it's telling me I can't view a line chart of this data. That's because there is too much to look at. But if I go and I click on a specific group here, so if I'm just looking at females, I can now look at a Lauren chart over time for everyone. And on this page, you can also click off anyone you don't wanna see as well. So very easy to use, and you can hover over it to see the specific information that's available. You'll also notice in some indicators, there is a time period here. For most of the American Community Survey data and some mortality data, there's a choice between five years and one years. And then in certain indicators, there's also a choice between one year and twelve months. The twelve months being a rolling twelve months with the most recent month of data available, and I will show some examples of that as well. Most data, when it has five-year data, the five-year data is the most reliable. It has the least amount of margin of error on estimates, meaning the chance of the statistic being incorrect is smaller. So it's generally the better one for comparison. The only thing with five-year data is that you can't compare years that overlap. So you should not compare, say, twenty eighteen, twenty twenty-two to twenty seventeen, twenty twenty-one numbers, because the same years are actually present in both. You would wanna compare the twenty eighteen, twenty twenty-two to a year that doesn't include that, which would be twenty thirteen to twenty seventeen would be the most recent one. But you can also flip to one years, in which case you'd be able to compare more of it. When you are on this page, you will often see for indicators that have it, a margin of error will be displayed as a kind of gray area on the line charts. They're much easier to see on bar charts, and I don't actually think we have them on all of, we do, they're just very tiny. We find one where they're much bigger. You will also see this margin of error on the bar charts. That is to help with comparisons, so if you're trying to compare different groups with each other, or you're trying to compare the McHenry County values to either the state or the U S values, you wanna look at where that bar is to see if there's any overlap between them. And again, you can turn off and look at, so if you wanted to say, look at that, it's black. You could look at that and more easily compare there. If you wanna see, though, all the groups, you have to go back and click on this. Little difficult to compare in some places, but you can always download the data as well. And then the other thing that's available for a good chunk of the data are maps, and I'm actually going to use our bite reports for this month. So not every indicator has maps available or does not necessarily have a lot of color on the maps. Where possible, where data exists for either census tract or zip code, there will be map data that you can click on. The map section will always be available, but it might not always show data, or it might just show the county value. Everything that's available for the map will show up in this map layers section here on the side. In this case, it's just available for census tract and counties. And then the colors on these also help you figure out what differences you can look at between these. So in this one, for example, we can have the full spectrum of seven colors, where you can say, oh, this place is, you know, higher than this place, because it's a darker color. We did our best to make sure that if it's not possible to do a comparison by color across the board, where the margin of error was a bit too high for certain data, we did not actually color the chart, or we have very few colors on the charts. That way, no one is misinterpreting a map and saying, oh, look, there's a lot more cases or a lot more people with this issue in this area. If we can't actually prove that based off of the statistics of that, we did not actually do a lot of colors on charts for that reason. We are actually hoping in some cases that they might be able to change their method for doing the maps so that we can do a bit more colors on them. But right now, with how the maps are performed, they kind of do an equal number of groups across in each color. So that makes it harder to actually put things in the same grouping.
Just seeing the striking difference in the amount of bite investigations.
That is the case for this one. In the case of Mary Ellen's data, actually, we used the twenty-twenty census estimate, so there are no margins of error here. So everything here is an actual true difference, but it might be a relatively small difference when you're comparing.
That's where the E Rs are, right? I guess.
Oh, yeah.
So these are all bites for, generally, duck bites is most of these.
As Dr. Tomaso was saying, a lot of those are where the E Rs are.
Yes. So this would be the bite report location in this one, so it would be where the bite incidents report is from. And then you'll also have a rank section available, where you can look at the ranks between places. And again, depending on what's available, if census tract or zip code or township is available, you can see the different sections and how they rank against each other. And then the last section available for everything is the source, which will have a description of the source and any technical notes on that source. I'm gonna go to another one again. And at the top of this source page, if there are any technical notes to be aware of that impact how you interpret the data, that will also be available on the top here where it's technical notes for this indicator. So example, for chlamydia infection rates, the twenty-three and twenty-four data are provisional. And then we do also suppress data when the number of cases is less than ten, as well as a link to more information. So our sources have a lot of extra information that people can find on different statistics as well. So really, the last thing I wanted to show you guys for the atlas, and then I can take questions. Just a couple of things for use on the atlas. Those margin of errors are very important to make sure nothing is misinterpreted when you're looking at a statistic. If data does not have a margin of error because one does not exist, as in it's not actually required, it's not an estimate, it's a true value, there will be no margin of error on there. If, however, it's a limitation of the data source where the margin of error was not published, that will be in the technical note, and it will say that be careful when you're comparing, you might misinterpret, basically. I'm paraphrasing a lot. And then as well, for the five-year estimates and the one-year, one-year estimates, don't compare five-year estimates that overlap, but you can compare any one-year estimate. And then the last thing I wanted to show was one of our twelve-month comparisons. I'm gonna go into some overdose surveillance data. And this actually has all the data that is available, both in the overdose surveillance report that goes up online, as well as what comes in your packet each month for the different statistics on the issues we're doing. So I'm gonna go to, let's do that. So for a lot of our data that we want to have available in real-time, what we've done is we've created a twelve-month section here that will show you the most recent twelve-month period in comparison to the previous twelve-month period where it's available. So it's not available for all, all data sources, if, for example, there's a new reportable condition or if we didn't start collecting an indicator until more recently. But that's how we're allowing us to have a bit more real-time data without having to worry about a lot of data being suppressed, because it's under our thresholds for suppression, is we're gonna have a running twelve-month that's gonna show the more recent twelve-month. And then where possible, the previous twelve months, you can get a kind of ballpark of how much a condition is currently occurring, and is it higher than we saw in the previous period, or lower or the same? Any questions?
Is, is this typically the software that other public health departments in the state uses?
So there are different software that everyone's kind of using. Metopio is a very specific software that it is actually created for the sole purpose of disseminating visual analytics to the public, for public health itself. Other ones that are in use are Tableau. We use Tableau for internal data comparisons. It has a bit more flexibility with that platform, but basically, they've said you can't put things out on the public unless you pay us hundreds of thousands of dollars a year. The state is kind of just going forward and putting it up, and you will find some counties that are doing the same, where they just put up the data and hope it doesn't get taken down. We're not going that route. We did not wanna have the risk, especially because Tableau just outright stated that you have to give us basically two-hundred-thousand dollars a year, something like that. It was ridiculous. Another popular one is Power BI, which is very similar to Tableau in terms of its flexibility, though a little bit less powerful in its capability. There are three places in the state that I know for a fact use the Health Atlas. That is us, Chicago, and Cook all use Metopio and use the Health Atlas. Chicago worked with U I C to put out their McHenry County Health Atlas in partnership with Metopio, and then Cook, Cook worked with Metopio themselves and put out a Health Atlas as well.
So the end user is really the public?
Yes.
It's not really other public?
It is.
Specifically, other public health professionals. It's, it's for the general public.
Both the public and then community partners. Community partners will have the greatest use in terms of using the data to kind of make cases for where they go in the community for harm reduction, for example, where they should target for something, or doing grants and things like that. General public would be more for information to keep everyone aware. We found in COVID, there was a big deficit with getting information. We found in COVID, there was a big deficit with getting information out quickly. And so this is supposed to kind of bridge that gap, that we can use this with anything we need to get out quickly with data, we can make it available here, and we can push it out pretty quickly.
That's specifically why I was asking.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question. Is it Metopio that one is making, like all the categories? So just knows, like, for demographics, under sex, you know, there's no, I see non-binary on there, and, you know, we talked about water quality for environmental health. There was nothing there on water. So is that something that Metopio, like, they gave you those, or is that something we, that the county put in?
So we have flexibility in any data we upload ourselves. Any curated data, it's going to be whatever the data source has available, and that actually has data that is available under a category. So, for example, a lot of mortality data doesn't have anything available for specific reasons because it's under 10, so that won't be on here because of suppression. Good question about sex. So we treat sex and gender as two completely different things. Sex is the sex at birth, and gender is whatever gender you currently have. We unfortunately have very, very little data on gender. The only actual dataset that has anything by gender is actually our homelessness data. But because of likely errors with the collection of the transgender and the fact that they don't have more than three categories of male, female, and transgender, we actually are treating it as sex because we don't want anyone to misinterpret that data. So it's a big limitation in public health data that there is very little data available on gender, as well as available data to even figure out if there are disparities because we don't know the number of people that are in different gender groups. So we have to do everything pretty much by sex, which I don't particularly like, and hopefully, it is something we can improve upon in public health as a whole, but that is one of our main limitations, you know?
Maybe you could make a notation at the bottom to say basically what you said.
Yeah.
That's actually really good.
Yeah. I think it's under how to use section, but if it's not, I will make sure we get it on there.
Cool.
Thank you. In terms of the topics, we selected from a list of Metopio topics of what is available, and then we supplied everything else we have. If there was data we could not find or that we haven't curated ourselves yet, that might be why it's not on there. There is actually a contact us form where people can submit questions as well as make requests. So if, for example, we get lots of questions about a dataset that we don't know about but that we are able to find, we can always put it on the atlas. We can actually do it very quickly. It's just a simple matter of uploading an indicator and then uploading the data.
Other questions? I had a question, or hopefully you can help me walk through it. I was playing with it before. Can you click on behavioral health?
Of course.
And I think what it is is probably a section that has too little data, and I'm curious where we decide what we put something up. Marijuana use.
Yes. So this data is from our community health assessment. So we only have one year of data for it right now, but the next time we do our assessment, we will be asking these questions again, and then we'll have more data.
My question is,
There's a specific one here.
I saw a primary method of using marijuana was dabbing, and I was uncertain with what that was going to be comparing or contrasting against. And then I clicked on it, and I was like, oh, this is cool, and I went to the map.
Yes.
And I don't know what to take from that. Does that mean that those are the only places where people are dabbing? I don't know what dabbing is also, so I'm like, so I think maybe I was a little amold. But this is, obviously illustrates a good question about,
Great question.
What does this mean, that the people outside of those areas don't dab? I thought it was a dam.
Yeah, just that's my first.
No, it's like,
Right, it's like,
No.
I wish Maura was here because she could answer your question about what dabbing is better than I could. In terms of any,
It's like a circle,
Yeah.
and then you,
I read that it's like a tincture or a,
Yeah, it's a tincture that you put inside, and then it's like you must look at it that way.
Yeah. So any indicator where we have no data for a particular area, we won't be showing that area. So you'll see that a lot with the recent SD data, where we don't have data available for a particular category. That category won't be there. So in the case of this map, for example, we only have data in these places. One of the limitations of the last community health assessment was the method they used for doing the estimates of places. So everywhere that has a estimate of zero for these zip codes can't calculate a margin of error, and we know that it is definitely not zero in all the places. So rather than have information that can be misconstrued, we chose to put no information available for the zip code. And that is usually in source notes, and the technical notes will have information about why something is not appearing.
My question then is, you said this was all curated. I don't know what myself or a layperson would, being a layperson, would take away from this, and I'm wondering if there's value in having this particular with, so, not that I have any issue with any the topic or anything, I don't,
Yeah.
I just mean in terms of the value of the data, I don't know what the takeaway is supposed to be with this.
Yeah. It is basically for transparency of data. Anything that we used in the community health assessment, so these were questions in the community survey, we did put data available. So we basically don't withhold any information. We put out everything we can and then leave the technical notes and the sources to explain why there may be missing information. The reason we actually made a how-to video was because Chloe actually goes through that exact thing of why you might not see information. And I didn't actually come up when I went in here, because I'm assuming this computer has loaded into the site before. For every new user that actually opens the site, you will get a pop-up that directs you straight to the how-to-use video, and we'll have you watch that first.
Yeah, popped up, and I said, I'm not watching this.
You have to take a quiz before it.
I should have, I should have watched it, okay.
This is only a six-minute video. We tried to get as close to five minutes as we could.
Nobody got time for that. Okay. Any other questions?
This is so cool, like,
It is really cool.
Makes my heart like pitter-patter. I can't wait to have more information because I do really think it will allow, like you said, community partners to be able to sort of survey the county and then see where the gaps are.
Do all counties have this, like, on this Health Atlas?
They do not. It is a growing movement in public health to make visuals available and not in static reports, meaning ways to actually interact with the data so you can more easily see it. You can look at trends, you can do comparisons. As I'm sure most of you have tried in the past, when you're looking at bars on a chart on a stat report, hard to tell what the number is sometimes. So it is a growing trend. I would say we are pretty much ahead of the game on this. There are definitely more in our region of Illinois that are working on visual analytics, but I will say besides Lake Cook and Chicago, we're pretty much ahead here with doing this and doing things internally with Tableau, which I think is great.
Thank you.
Oh, like, can I clap for that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for your hard work.
Thanks, Ryan.
That's great job.
Can I ask, is all the information basically from this point in time moving forward? We're not going to go back to trying?
Some of it will go back, depending on what Metopio curated and what we had available, some of it will go back 10 years or more.
My computer.
There are some datasets that might even go back more than that. Certain indicators that we only recently started collecting or new for our program will be basically from this point in time onwards. But where we can, most data actually goes from 10 years ago onwards.
And can I ask, how long did it take you to get all of that data in that form?
It was approximately six months. Loading, reviewing, reading every description, and making sure we understood limitations so we could have it on there, yeah. It was all my staff, so me plus four others were all working on this, so a little chat.
For how long?
Six months.
Six months. I didn't hear.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did that process kind of put perspective on how the community study and how, what other efforts we would do to get kind of filling in other gaps that maybe we don't have data on?
Yeah. From this, we definitely saw where we have some gaps on. Unfortunately, in some cases, there aren't public datasets available for it. But what I like about this is that the next time we do our assessment is going to be very, very quick because all the data is going to be up here in real time. Basically, if ACS launches something in June, then within a few months, we're going to have it up on the atlas. So it's going to actually speed up our ability to make our next community health assessment, which means we can actually look at the gaps and then fill those in from the survey we do and say, oh, we don't have good data on here. Let's add that to the survey, and let's make sure we actually can get information on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Excellent work.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a lot, they, as you said, I mean, it's pretty incredible how much time and effort on the backend to get it to this point. And hopefully, you know, people will, and Ryan, will we be track, will we be able to track, or will we be able to track?
Yes. Yeah, so there are analytics inside to see how many people have used it by time, and some aggregate as well, yeah.
Great.
Great.
Very nice.
Okay. Any other last questions, Ellen?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, move on to department and division updates. Administrator is Edinson.
Okay. So I apologize, but we just realized today at the last minute, there are a couple of things that did not make it into the packet. One is a grant. It's a recurring grant. It's for our city readiness initiative. And so we have a choice, like, the way the policy reads now, I can go ahead. I have actually already signed this contract because that is how our policy reads. But we have been bringing those contracts here for you to see them. But in this case, for some reason, it did not make it into the packet, so we can bring it back next month, or we can proceed. The state does not allow us to move forward with the process in egrams until you sign it. So that is part of the reason why we move it forward, but we have been bringing them here. We do have a policy that gives me the authority to sign it. So I guess I'm looking for, would you like it to come back next month?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think there's always value in looking at it.
Yeah, absolutely. And then sadly, also the community health, so that was part of all the community health items, which this was one, did not make it into the packet. The report.
No, I didn't, no, I, I know, I defer to the officers, I mean, to the executive peeps, whatever you guys are comfortable with. You want to bring it back, bring it back. If not, I mean,
Well, if it's our past precedent to look at them.
Yeah, it's a recurring grant, so when it's under a 20% change, you know, it doesn't, but we probably want to look at that policy and just see, but I think it's important from transparency that you're seeing what's happening.
There's also value in the board itself, seeing the things that we engage in and the grants.
We can bring it back, no problem.
Okay.
We just, last week, submitted the capacity and cost assessment as a reminder. That's the process we are participating in, like most of the other health departments across the state. Ideally, it's going to compare us and contrast us and see where there might be opportunities for funding or show the gap between what we do and are required to do, and then what we are getting money to do. So there'll be more coming on that. I also, Karen is not here today, so I am doing the financials, which will be
Keep it.
Brief. Okay.
Any questions or comments?
Oh, yes.
That we've discussed already.
Okay. So you have in your packet the financials and just a couple of things to note. So when you look at the financials, we did something a little different this time based on feedback from finance and the auditor. So previously, we had spent a lot of time matching the dispersment report to the budget analysis, which, or the income and expense report. They have discouraged us from continuing that practice because it takes a lot of time. What happens with the dispersments is it's based on what is actually being paid in that month, but some of those payments go back in prior months, right? So for every payment that is from a prior month, we have to go figure out where it is, put it in the right place. So they said, why do you keep doing that? But the difference, what you'll notice is, now when you look at, if you were comparing the dispersment report to the income and expense, it's not going to match, and that is why. And this is a snapshot of point in time, but when you look at, so if you look at the monthly, it's not going to match, but the year-to-date includes it all. Does that make sense so far?
Yes.
Okay, so one notable thing, when Karen ran the dispersment report, so these are snapshots in time. It's not the same time that she ran the, she ran the income and expense. So there is one payroll that is not included on the dispersment report. That is included in the 8:30, so the last pay period in August is not reflected on the dispersment, but it is shown on the income and expense report. Otherwise, we're pretty much on track. Another tip, just as a reminder, is if you're looking at the individual lines, you might see some that are above 100%. It is best to look at that summary line, the 3,000s, the 4,000s, the 5,000s, because it will give you a different picture of what is, what dollars are available. Happy to answer questions if I can.
Oh, but our treasurer, Dr. Anzor, is not present. Questions? Okay. Does that conclude your report?
It does.
Fantastic. Thank you. Let's go to Director Nell.
Just a couple of quick things. We are kind of coming to the end of our season here with the recycling event, so we have one this Saturday that will be electronics and environmental defenders who collect a variety of things from clothing, fluorescent bulbs, et cetera, batteries. And then we'll have one again next month, which will also include document destruction. And I just wanted to give a shout-out to the McHenry County Water Forum because Scott Kikendale, who's the Water Resources Specialist, puts an awful lot of work into this, and it's coming up this Wednesday at MCC. And he will be speaking at it, but they also have a climatologist and an urban conservation specialist that we'll be speaking to. So it's from 5:30 to 8:00 at MCC, and it actually is really very informational and and really, people get a lot out of it. So that's, that's this Wednesday.
And there's free dinner at the Dukes Ale House.
What?
Yeah. It's an on-storm water, too, which is a good, talking about runoff and,
It's not made for stormwater?
I'm saying the topic is stormwater this year.
Farm to table to stormwater.
Exactly. Farm to table to ride down the drain.
Director Marion.
Thank you. Short and sweet, we did receive our bids back for the answering service. Proposals that we sent out, we received nine bids back.
Wow.
So we will be reviewing them this week, all staff, and hopefully have a selection by the end of the week. Public health wins kicked off on the 9th of September. All the surveys went out to all of our employees. Surveys take about 25 minutes, but you can stop in between. It doesn't shut down. You don't need to start all over. So it's easier for staff to find the time to do that. They will be sending out surveys through mid-October when this closes out, and we will hopefully begin to get data. We need to get 80% participation from our employees in order to receive the deep dive of data that we're going to be looking for. So we'll let you know how that goes. They'll be sending out reminders. The Crystal Lake update, the bids are being finalized and will be going out. We're targeting September 24th to be done with the construction documents. And to go to final review and have bidding all completed by October 23rd for the November Board Award, so we are moving on that as well. We'll be doing walkthroughs with any of the bidders in October. We have been solidified the exact times and dates yet.
Questions? Sorry, Director Howell.
We have about 110-plus dogs signed up for tomorrow's rabies microchip clinic, so we're excited about that. And then don't forget that we have a cat clinic in October and another dog clinic in October, and that registration can be found on our website. I will be bringing Dr. Kennedy's contract back next month. I'm hoping that maybe we'll be bringing another contract for a secondary veterinarian to help with some of our clinics next month as well. We are working, of course, on the plan for the renovation and where we will work and how we will work and all that fun stuff. You probably know that I belong to the animal, the Illinois Animal Control Association, and I've been asked to represent the state again at the summit in Texas. No, I'm sorry, it's in, it's in Nevada, sorry. Las Vegas, not in Texas this year. So I've been asked to represent the state along with somebody from Cook County for that. And then part of my, part of my work on that organization as a board member is to sit on the training committee, and I'm going to be co-leading with another person training for animal control administrators and directors around the state. So that's been a very interesting process gathering that. And we just finished our survey to send out to find out what would they like out of the 20 topics that we have. We feel like part of that's going to be just conversation on how are things going, and sort of, as you know, the work we do is very stressful, so supporting each other through some of those stressful times, such as the, you probably saw in the paper, the 48 counts of animal cruelty for Huntley, the 38 animal cruelty counts, I'm sorry, Boone County was the 54, 38 in Huntley. We also issued 20-some tickets to that same residence. Uh, we also issued 20-some tickets to that same residence, and very likely there, hopefully will be some more charges coming from the abandoned dogs, if they're connected. And then, the only other thing is, I have been asked to work with our Illinois Animal Control Association lobbyists on some dangerous dog, um, laws in the state, to kind of tighten those up a little bit, so. So I'm very excited. Oh, and we just hired our kennel coordinator.
Oh, great.
Yay, yes.
Congratulations.
Yeah, she's going to start on the 30th, and we're very excited, she has a vet tech certification, and she's just a sad to come join us, so I'm very happy.
Great, cool. Congratulations on your selection to both Nevada.
So fancy.
Very cool, does anyone have any questions?
I have one question, the clear of the kennel, how did that go?
We only had about 10 adoptions through that. Um, really, we're just going to do another adoption, uh, event in October to see. But our population is going down, yay, yay, yay. Uh, and we are continuing to transfer all the animals we can, we have a bunch of kittens, we're going to be transplanting soon here. So our population is going down a little bit, I hate to say it too loud, because I'm afraid it might, you know, spike again, but right now, our population is slightly more manageable. So, um, we are putting in our security, uh, security requests with the courts this week for the cats from Huntley. So hopefully, we'll make some progress there and be able to move some of those cats. Because right now, we're just sitting on 17 cats from that situation.
So when you say that, that's a request to the court for reimbursement?
Yes, so it's, it's a good chunk of money for them to pay, but we're taking care, giving that services, et cetera, so.
Any questions? With the dogs seized in Boone County, now, do we do any sort of sharing with them? I know they're, feel like a little bit smaller, are they taking, did they take all the dogs from Hammer Time?
So they have the dogs that were dumped in their county, and they have dispersed them to rescues, um, instead of docking them out. I'm going to be releasing the dogs that we have, because we finalized the testing that we needed to do for those dogs. So they have been doing what we call foster to transfer, and they will be officially transferred probably by the end of this week.
And I'm only, only familiar with what I read about the Hammer Time, I used to live out that way, so I'm familiar with that, but the dogs that we got, where did they come from then?
Um, they came from various locations in McHenry County.
Oh, okay, wasn't part of that.
We did not get any animals from another county, no.
Okay. Other questions?
Did the, those dog owners have like any prior, um, issues with the county?
Can you say one more time to me?
Did those dog owners have any prior issues with the county? Because how do you house 50-plus dogs on your property without anyone noticing?
Well, you know, the question is, were they actually on the property or not? We really haven't been able to fully determine that. There are a variety of violations they're going through, so, yeah.
Director Ferris.
So we do finally have a confirmed ribbon cutting for our mobile clinic. Um, it's going to be October 10th at 8:30 in the morning, um, and for, um, it's going to be a whole meeting.
You will all get a safe date? I see scribbling by.
You're going to get that day early.
We decided to do like a soft rollout of the clinic, we're doing county, um, flu vaccinations that day, right after the ribbon cutting in the unit. So it kind of gives an opportunity for us to kind of get the flow down, kind of get a feel for what we need, um, before we move into some bigger things. And it gives the county employees an opportunity to look inside, check it out themselves. So 10:10 and 8:30, we'll be sending out an invitation.
It'll be right up there.
It doesn't hurt.
Uh, we're also initiating new program, um, I've reached out to Dr. Tomaso and provided information for her, and she is, um, agreed to write the stairs, sign the standing orders for us to initiate this program. It is a post-exposure prophylaxis for STVs, STIs. So, um, it's for doxycycline, so if anybody that is a high risk and has had previous infection, we can give them the, um, medication that they could use after having an exposure, a high-risk exposure, um, prophylactically. Um, the, the study that this came from has shown great results, that it really did reduce, particularly chlamydia and syphilis, um, and impacted as well, gonorrhea infections as well. So, uh, there's not enough information, or not enough study information for, um, other classifications of individuals, it's just these real high-risk individuals that we're, that we are going to be providing this to.
So they actually provide the medication or the prescription?
It, we will be providing it, the state, um, is supporting this program, and at this time, they're willing, they're going to be providing us the doxycycline.
So shelf life on that?
Uh, it depends, I mean, it, it can last over a year.
It's not like the super cooling that we needed.
No, 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 it's just oral, yeah. Oral, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It's a prescription, it's not over the counter.
Sorry, forgive me, I mean, right, I should have said.
Yeah.
Any questions? Questions? Close your report, okay. Director Hag.
I just have a couple of things, thanks. Um, we've been increasing our opioid outreach education, so we've been working with our hospital systems and our schools to get in there and do that education. Um, we also participated in overdose awareness day. And then, um, our MRC volunteers have been continuing to be really active, so they've been helping with a lot of our health screenings with us and with cultivating health ministries. Um, they're also been really busy helping with the mental health work-funded agencies to teach their CPR classes. So it's been a huge benefit to have them be CPR certified, and to have those trainers on hand, because they've been helping with a lot of our agencies, plus us at the county, so it's good. Um, just an interesting stat that I just wanted to share, that, um, our average WIC participant show rate last year ran about 76%, so I looked at the last six months, and it looks like we're running, um, the show rate is now up to 88% just in the last six months, so it's a huge increase, so I thought I'd share that.
Do you attribute that to?
I don't know, but we have a, um, a young, very dynamic new coordinator, and, um, he's just been doing some great things in that program, so we love him.
That's good. So nothing else changed? The mobile unit didn't just start showing up?
Do you just not move?
Was there, isn't the pace increased their availability, right? Didn't they, more people can use that?
But they have Uber. Is that where you're trying to?
I, I can't, well, I don't.
So is it transportation, they have more access to transportation?
Right, isn't there, wasn't there a change with that, like, oh, anyone can do that, or increase in the county, where you can, you know, use the pace bus, you know, like the, the one that comes to your house, what's that called?
You can Uber now, I think that's, that was a big change, so the county's underwriting, I think it's the $16 of a $20 Uber.
Okay, that's, yeah, I wonder if that makes a difference.
We know.
I don't know for sure.
But you know, you do, WIC is now a debit card, as opposed to the old-fashioned checks, and that, that took place right around COVID. So it has been a couple of years for that, so that, I think, hasn't helped increase participation. They've been doing a lot of outreach and education in the community, the staff have been, so I think that has helped. But the interesting thing is that it's at both locations. So Crystal Lake and Woodstock both have a huge increase in the participation show rate.
That's great.
That's good.
Anything else to report? Any questions?
I plugged you all today at a big meeting, where someone from Lefrelali shared that she was asked to present in a school and was terrified, and I said, wow, this is a great moment for us to collaborate. If you would like some other names with you, the Health Department can partner with you, and she said, yes, please, let's do that. Just for some of that education, trying to like break into the school systems, because we know that that's challenging.
Well, we have some great people, and some great presenters who do a lot of this, so that would probably be a good, good person to fly under the wing of. Okay, uh, thank you, Director, appreciate it all. Um, we're going to move on to consent agenda, I didn't miss anyone, right? I didn't miss anything, I'm new in this spot. Please stop me if I'm doing something wrong.
You're doing a great job.
I don't know about that. Uh, on to the consent agenda. Uh, would any board member like to poll any item of the consent agenda? Otherwise, we'll look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I will second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Who deals with financials, we'll do a roll call vote.
Ms. Alda?
Yes.
Ms. Ortiz?
Yes.
Ms. Carmen?
Yes.
Dr. Katz?
Yes.
Dr. Zurich?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
And Mr. Markson?
Yes. Thank you all, the motion passed. Onto item seven, contracts and agreements. So we have a contract before us, the McHenry County College EMT and Paramedic Program.
This is an affiliation agreement to have EMT students come. Um, they're adding a component of public health to their curriculum, if you see what we're doing. So we'll be having, those students are will be starting very soon. We're excited to have it's a different student than we had in the past.
Sure.
That's great.
I have lots of questions, so. Does anyone else have any questions? No, okay.
Do I have a motion before discussion, or no? Do I just do?
Yeah, let's do that, let's do the real thing.
I'll make a motion to approve the, um, contract with McHenry County College for the EMT and Paramedic Program.
I'll second it.
All right, there's a motion on the table, now I get to talk. Uh, obviously, I've been through the paramedic program, I've taught it for years, I have tons of EMT and paramedic students, it's pretty, pretty groovy that introducing public health component. I'm just kind of curious, I read through the contract a little bit, and I have a number of questions, in terms of, like, how many hours each student?
I don't have that information in front of me, as far as how many hours they need to do, um, specifically, but I do know there's like 10 students, and they're spending like six weeks with us, or four hours per week.
I know it says EMT and paramedic, I suspect it's paramedics only, uh, because the curriculum is much more intense than EMTs, and even, for example, like, ride time with EMTs might just be two days in total, but 10 students for the program. Uh, I think, my number one concern after reading that contract was that I want to make sure that you and the department is protected. Um, I just felt like there was a little lopsided on behalf of the school. Is this, this is our first contract, right, it's a new one?
It, it's the, it's basically the same contract we have with MCC, it's just now with this, this, these students.
Okay.
Because we do have the nurses, we have the nurses come as well.
Sure, I just noticed a couple of things on there that, that, um, at the start, there's no, there's no cost sharing, right, that it just says there's no, they're not paying us for this. Uh, the concern I've had, I have with this, as I've had with other, and I want to support this education, right, I want to support paramedics. I think there might be some value in it, but I also know the type of students that go through this sort of program tend to be young, they tend to skew a little younger, they want to be firefighters, there's a little less academic rigor. Um, I'm assuming that they're wanting to incorporate this to build into an associate's program or something like that, they're looking for some extra hours, which is great. But I want to make sure that your staff and you are protected in the sense of, uh, if it pulls our staff away for having to deal with issues, um, and there's no cost benefit for us, not benefit, but to recoup any of that. So one thing was, as far as I, maybe I misread it here, but it looks like the college can terminate the contract at any time for any, for no reason at all, 14 days, um, but we don't have that same ability. Um, I didn't see, at least it didn't say for us in there. Then, um, there's a commenting here about when they can, when you can remove a student. Obviously, if there's a safety issue, you can remove them immediately, and then contact the school and let them know. But outside of that, you can't remove them from that, except with their approval and writing.
You mean, remove the student from the clinic area? We have full authority to do that, even without a contract.
Yeah, um.
I mean, this is just an affiliation agreement, they're.
Is there a supervisor, is there somebody with the students when they're with you?
We have, we always have supervision in the building where they're at, um, and they're assigned to an individual that has agreed to precept them, and to have them, um, come along. And anytime they go to see a client, we get the client's permission for the student to be present, um, during that visit, um, and document that. Some people's, most people's, they don't, they agree. Um, so we do have, on occasion, other people that will refuse, and we just, you know, give them to somebody else.
And Kyle, I'm going to guess that the college gets to cancel, because they don't have the enrollment, or it's not working, your fears, it's not really as good from an academic perspective, hard for us to cancel in the middle of a guarantee to students that we're providing some kind of service.
That actually addresses that in here?
Okay.
So termination clause, there's a breach, right, if either party breaches any terms or conditions in the agreement, the non-breaching party can terminate it by providing 14 days' written notice. Section two of that is, the college is right to terminate, they can terminate the agreement for any reason or no reason at all by giving 30 days' written notice. Section three is effect on students. Terminating the agreement will not affect students currently undergoing clinical experience during the ongoing academic term. That is, that is the totality of the termination clause. So MCDH does not have the op, option to terminate it, if it were to, I don't know, suddenly become burdensome to our operations.
Or if there's a conduct issue, or, I mean, there's a hundred.
Is that not true, though? Like, I'm just thinking through, when I have a student, I sign an affiliation agreement with the university, and then additionally, I have, like, legal and ethical binding contracts based on discipline that I have, the, as the supervisor, the student fills out, and vice versa. So this might just be the agreement between the schools, but then is there a different agreement between, like, the supervisor and the agency that kind of goes through all of that?
Well, typically, there is an agreement with, where you have the preceptor will meet with the instructor, and there's that agreement as far as what, you know, deliverables are going to be met. With this situation, it's more of a shadowing experience. Um, and we, you know, any nurse has the authority to say, no, um, based on any behavior or discipline issues. And honestly, we've never had that issue come up, but I do think if we really had the problem, I would have no problem calling the school and saying, this student is not welcome back here. And I, and I think it would be respected whether there's an agreement or not.
I, I 100% agree, sorry.
I've, I've presepted medical students for years, and I have, I've had a couple of conduct issues, and I never signed any agreement saying, or, I, yeah, I never had a clause, and, you know, I called the director, I said, uh, take him back, and they said, yeah, you know.
They're like, you're the third one.
I mean, how we know this will play out is different, but the way it's written, right, it is a contract for a reason, and all I'm doing is bringing up to, to everyone that, it, it seems lopsided to me. I have sat on agreements, I've sat on disciplinary proceedings for students. I am literally familiar with some of the things that have occurred, um, personally familiar with it, and people's livelihoods, their employments have ended because of that behavior that was so obviously wrong that, that it came to that. Um, I'm not saying paramedics are the worst people on the planet, obviously, I'm one of them, I'm a big supporter. I'll, I have, I have a responsibility here to, you know, it just, I, as I read the contract, it looked lopsided. It was my only takeaway is, I felt like, I know you can make a call, it'll be fine, but I just, food for thought, it's okay.
Do we ever have a, a legal opinion of our contracts? Does anybody look at them legally?
Do you have an attorney?
The state's attorney looks at them, and this is the standard contract that we get from MCC, that, yeah, they just plug in the types.
I probably approved an exact similar to this, but until I was like seeing it through my own eyes, I'm like, oh my gosh. So any other comments, questions, concerns? No?
I guess my question is, do you want us to go back to the university, to MCC and say, you know, request that change?
I am one voice on this board, and I'm the only one that has, seems to have an issue with it, so I would, I would defer to the will of the group. It obviously isn't going to be significant issue, you can't keep them there against their will, but, if unless anyone else wants to change anything, there is a motion on the table. Okay, um, it does not have a financial impact. Could just do a voice vote? I'm looking at Pam.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, all those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, the ayes have it, motion passes. Thank you.
Kyle, I would be happy to support any further information to help you feel more comfortable with contracts moving forward. I just would want it to be explained to me, right? Like, all the nuances and what would need to be in there and whatnot.
Yeah. To my own lack of credit, I had not reviewed it as closely as I would have liked to until right before this, so I didn't have the opportunity to reach out, but food for thought next time.
I, going along with that, I, what I would do is just, why don't you specifically bring the concerns that Kyle raised to our state's attorney, and then see if there isn't a, a follow-up that needs to happen with the college, just so that you have that, and it's a comfort level. No, because I'm, because we've had contracts with like Northern Illinois and.
Yeah, we've had a lot.
It's just like, you know, it's kind of like when you make your will, it's just like, ding, you know, you, there's like the, you know, I mean, there's the one form that's approved, and then you just fill it in, I'm curious if that's just what it is. And then, you know, so.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not.
But this program itself is new to MCC.
No, the program has been there for a while.
The affiliation with us, with those students.
They're expanding.
They're wanting to expose their students to public health. And that's never been done in the past.
I've never heard of it.
Which is.
Probably at the preeminent teaching facility for this.
But even MCC might, this might be a learning experience for MCC, right? Like, they might just, this is also new to them, so maybe it is worth having that conversation with the attorney just to kind of see, and then MCC might be, oh yeah, we didn't think about that, because it's our first time doing this. Thank you, we can add that later, but, I mean, we just voted, but.
We had a motion, it passed, we've accepted it, we'll sign it, we're done with it. Thank you, guys, appreciate it. Can I move on to new unfinished business? Any? I see none, all right. Board issues, anybody have anything for the good of the order? Seeing none, moving on, information and communications, they're in your packets. Executive session, I don't believe there's any need. Onto the appendix, you know where to find that. Any questions before we all go?
Turn the right over.
There you go. Thank you all for your time, I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
We have a motion from Ms. Altough, from Ms. Clark. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motions adjourn. Thank you all.